Fairmont Area School Board Meeting, it is Tuesday, October 27th, 2015. Our roll call this evening is Rufus Rodriguez is absent, but the rest of the board members are here. Please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes of our last school board meeting, which was on October 13th?
I haven't. I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
Thank you, Dan. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Nicole. I have a motion by Dan, second by Nicole, to approve the October 13th, 2015 school board meeting minutes as printed. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Then if you look at your agenda, you should have a green agenda this evening. And under Board Committee Reports, there's a couple of little changes on the Operations Staff Welfare Audit Meetings. There's also one from 10:27, and Dan will handle, will combine those. And then we'll take off Southern, excuse me, Southern Plains Board Meeting. That did not happen. And then the other change would be under New Business, Soccer and Hockey Funding Proposal will be handled by Dan. Any other additions or corrections to the agenda? I entertain a motion.
I move to approve the October 27th, 2015 school board meeting agenda as amended.
Thank you, Nicole. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Julie. I have a motion by Nicole, second by Julie, to approve the October 27th school board meeting agenda with the corrections and additions. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Well, tonight, we have some celebrations and school community reports to talk about, so there's lots of representatives from the High School Musical here. I'm not sure. Oh, now everybody's here? Do you want to wait? Okay, we will wait, and we'll go to the Superintendent's Report and Calendar. Can you, like, jump in right now?
I can jump in right now.
Okay.
At 6 o'clock tonight, by the way, the New Teacher Recognition Bank will be held at the Holiday Inn. Monday, November 9th, the Staff Development Curriculum Committee will be meeting at 3:45 in the William Budd Room of Fairmont Elementary School. And on Tuesday, November 17th, the school board will meet with the pre-K2 faculty in the William Budd Room. That's at 3:15 in the afternoon. And the Musical will, I'm sure, will tell us what days and what time the Musical is going to be. And a couple of other updates, Diane. First of all, if you went by on Highway 15 on the east side of the high school today, you will have noticed there is a construction crew from Wisconsin that is starting to build the greenhouse, starting to construct the greenhouse. It will take anywhere from two to three weeks. They're hoping to get it done in two weeks, but if weather is like it is today, it might take closer to three weeks. And then this morning, I did testify this morning at the Mauer County Courthouse. This is a lawsuit that was filed between Niles Wees Company versus the Joseph Company, and that dealt with our retention pond from Fairmont Elementary School. That court case has been going on for a couple of months, and I testified this morning, and so did Dave Turnberg. And hopefully, that case will be settled here in a few weeks. The judge, it's a judge hearing, so the judge will make the ruling. But that has to do with the retention pond, and about how it was put in the first time, and how it was put in the second time. But the fact is, it's working. And then quickly, an enrollment report. We currently are serving 1,714 students in the district, 905 at the elementary, and 809 at the high school. I did meet with the high school counseling department this afternoon, and we've had a number of new students that have come in, and we've had a number of students that have left. And once again, they are keeping very good records about why people are leaving and why people are going. The main reasons are job opportunities either here or in other places, and families that are having children leave, either with the mother or the dad. We have had a few online school students that have returned back to our school. We've had a few students in our school that have gone online. So it's kind of interesting. A few more students have gone to the ALC, but we're at 1,714. If you look at the sheet behind you, a year ago at this time, we had 1,697. So we're actually serving about 17 more students right now than we were a year ago today. That's all I have, Diane.
Any questions for Superintendent Brown? Are we going back to you? Okay. Well, evidently, the lost are found in the High School Musical, and we're going to have a report from them, and I'm not sure who's first, Kate Cullenback? And then will you introduce whoever you brought, and, or tell your names? Don't be shy.
Mary Poppins has arrived.
Can we have them stand?
Yes.
Hi there, and thank you for inviting us. The Fairmont High School Fall Musical has taken a new direction this year. It started last spring with a conversation between some of us educators who have a huge interest in theater. Fast forward to August, and myself, Kate Cullenback, Sarah Goodall, and Molly Blis, our team directing the Musical. But not without much help from other educators in the building, community members, and so many enthusiastic and hardworking students. Building instructor Keith Anderson is doing an incredible job of building the movable set parts with his students. Mary Schmidt, former Fairmont Area Schools FIAE teacher, is building extensions and levels on the stage. Math teacher Mark Hurnus and Bruce Abbott are guiding the sound possibilities in the Performing Arts Center. Terry Riley and recent FHS grad Jordan Strouzer have choreographed the dances. Parent Michelle Norstrom has created some costumes in efforts to help us avoid the expensive renting. Art teacher Candace Petchke has helped make some props with assistance from her students. And several organizations, including Civic Summer Theater, Children's Theater, and Fairmont Elementary School Theater Program, have allowed us to borrow costumes, as well as a host of family and Friends of Production members who have helped in so many ways. This year's musical is Mary Poppins. We have a cast and a pit orchestra, both combined include about 95 students, but we have many more students, approximately 35, who are learning the ins and outs of theater by building, painting, stage managing, searching out props and costume parts, helping with sound and lights, and more. It seems to be turning into not just an FHS theater production, but a community of Fairmont production. We've brought with us some of our students involved in the production. In front of you is the Banks family. Raise your hands. George, George Banks is played by senior Austin Becker. He has a difficult time relating to his family. He loves them, but doesn't know how to express this to them, and avoids that expression by simply consuming himself and his work. It doesn't help that he was raised by a nanny who is affectionately referred to as "the holy terror." Winifred Banks, played by senior Madison Plumhoff, truly loves her husband and wants to help him be the best man she knows he can be, while wanting to raise her children without the assistance of outside help. Jane and Michael Banks, played by eighth grader Anna DeWitt and seventh grader Amelia Camarogory, simply put, are little terrors. During the course of the show, they go from spoiled and naughty to fun-loving. They yearn for time and affection and happiness from their parents. The person who gives them this time and affection and teaches them how to be happy is Mary Poppins, played by senior Emily Muller. She and her friend Bert, played by sophomore Ben Hurnus, together show Jane and Michael that if they can be a little bit more responsible and caring, they may get the same from their parents. As stated many times throughout the production, anything can happen if you let it. The performances will be, will begin with a free senior citizen matinee on Wednesday, November 11th, at 12:30 PM. There are also evening performances at 7:00 PM on Thursday, November 12th, Friday, November 13th, and Saturday, November 14th. Admission is $7 for adults, five for senior citizens at all the evening performances, and $5 for students without ID badges. We hope you'll come and see the talents and hard work put together by these students, because they, they have truly earned your attendance. Thank you. Do you have questions for them? Because they would love to talk.
They all love to talk?
They love to talk. That's why they're in theater. Just kidding.
I want to know if Mary, Mary Poppins, do you have an umbrella?
I do. I, it's at school.
Oh.
And you let it go, and it opens and closes.
And do you actually elevate?
No.
No.
That's hard to imagine.
Okay, what's your favorite song?
My favorite, my favorite song is...
Oh, any of you.
Um, I like "Let's Go Fly, Hey," because that's fun.
I like, um, what's it called? Playing the Game. It's like, it's really kind of, it's kind of a spooky song, but it's also like lower down, so I get a break, hopefully. But it's also, it's really fun to have a lot of dancers in that scene.
Okay.
Um, I think "Super Cal" is pretty cool. They got some good choreography. I'm not in it, but I get to watch it.
Yeah. That's a good part, when you don't have to be in it to do them there. Yeah, all right, great.
I say my favorite, as long as anything can happen.
As long as anything can happen? All right, very cool.
Um, I think that's awesome.
Super Cal?
I like "Let's Go Fly, Hey."
Let's go fly.
I don't know why, but that's something.
Yeah. Yeah. I think all the songs kind of get stuck in your head, don't they, from Mary Poppins? Yeah, yeah. So were you excited when you heard it was Mary Poppins? Was that, like, something that you were interested in tackling as a project?
Like, kind of, I guess. I know that, um, when I heard about that, I knew that, that, um, that that musical would have a lot of larger roles, instead of like the main two, and a lot of other, like, smaller roles. Like, it's much more of a group effort, and I know that a lot of the students feel more involved than they have in the past.
Well, 95 participants is great. Very, very cool, yeah, yeah, yeah. So you're learning a lot? Is it hard to memorize all this stuff? How many lines do you have?
Okay, how many lines do we have?
A lot, yeah. There's a lot to learn, isn't there, yeah?
So basically, you've just started at the beginning of school, then, the first?
Oh, yeah, pretty much, because tryouts were...
Yeah, we auditioned them at, at the end of the first week of school. We, and we casted over the weekend, and we started the next Tuesday, I think it was, with our first read-through.
And you have kids in grades eight, seven?
Seven through 12.
Seven through 12, yeah. Wow.
Pit is eight through 12, cast is seven through 12, and we have seven through 12 helping out with all of the back stuff. Some kids just weren't comfortable being on stage. Said, hey, you want to help maybe stage manage or build a set? Yeah, so it's been great.
And then I heard there's 12 practices left. You ready?
Eleven.
Eleven?
We're down to 11.
I heard 12, so you're down one now, so you'll be ready?
Yeah, they're going to be ready.
It's going along good?
There's a lot to do yet, but they'll be ready.
All right, very cool.
Yeah, there's a lot of magic. This is a Disney show. It's Cameron Mackintosh and Disney's Mary Poppins, so there is magic involved, so, which is kind of, we'll, we'll let you come and see what that magic is.
Yeah, yeah. And thank you for coming and dressing up in your costumes. That is, like, very cool to see that, so gives us a little flavor of what's going to be coming up, and so we hope everybody comes out and just have four chances to go, November 11th, 12th, 13th, and 14th, and the 12th, 13th, and 14th, at 7 o'clock at night at the Performing Arts at the High School. Right? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah.
You're good.
We don't have any music here.
Okay.
All right. Since we've done the Superintendent's Report, we'll move to Financial Business, and we have our audit report this evening, and we have Craig Poltenhagen here from Clifton, Larson, Allen, and he's going to share what the audit findings are, and we'll be able to ask questions, and thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Am I coming through okay?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Well, tonight, we have this Clifton, Larson, Allen production of the Audit Musical, so as soon as my singer shows up, she'll sing the report to you. Maybe not. Anyway, we did complete the audit. It's been issued. Final reports are published, and basically, the synopsis is, you have a very clean audit report again this year. We issued a clean opinion on the financial statements, so we believe the numbers and the disclosures are correct in accordance with accounting principles. We issued a report on internal controls over reporting, so not only do we test the numbers, but we also test the process. We had just two findings on financial reporting. One is material weakness, because we, as the auditors, prepared the financial statements. You've seen that one in the past, and that one's fairly routine in our client base, so you're not an exception to, to the rest of your peers. We also had just another finding on adjustment related to recording a disposal of windows that had been replaced in some of the buildings in the previous year. It was recorded in this fiscal year, so we did issue a finding on that, but processes have been put in place to kind of watch for disposals of fixed assets. And what I'm referring to there is basically fixed assets or capital assets, our buildings, equipment, office furniture, things of that nature. So typically, there's always, you know, good controls around when, when the district buys something, buys something new, records that as an asset. It's not uncommon to have less emphasis on recording a disposal or a replacement, per se, so, so that's what this second finding was about. Again, procedures have been put in place. We didn't lose control of anything within the district, so everything that we think belongs here is here, so nothing to be concerned about there. And our singer has just arrived. Lindsay Heine has entered the room, stage right, so...
And Craig, spend a moment, too, on the, what you're talking about. These are windows that were disposed of out of the old Lincoln School Building.
Right.
That were replaced with new windows, and of course, we have an old Lincoln for a number of years.
Yep.
Okay.
So, so that's just basically kind of a cleanup item that was caught. Actually, your staff caught it, not ours, so it's just a matter of, you know, making sure things like that happen or get recorded in, in the fiscal year that they happen. So I really have no, otherwise no concerns over, over that one myself either. So we issued a report on compliance. So for the federal grant program, we tested compliance on the child nutrition cluster. We had no findings there, no recommendations, no exceptions. So that was a nice, clean, clean audit on the child nutrition cluster, was, as with all of our audits in the state of Minnesota, we have to test compliance with Minnesota statutes. So there's a, about an inch-high thick of audit, stack of audit programs that we have to work through on that, and there were no compliance findings there either. So overall, a very, very clean audit, nice report, good results, I think. So the next thing I wanted to talk about, then, is just a few of the charts and graphs. And what we have displayed here is basically a snapshot of the general fund, which is the main operating fund of the district. So we always focus a lot of attention here. It's where most of the education occurs, the teaching of kids, teaching of students. It's also the main operating fund of the district, so all of the building operations, transportation, busing, things of that nature. Teacher salaries run through the general fund, so, so that's why we have focused a lot of attention here. Top line, general fund revenues were just under $19.1 million. Expenditures were just, were right at $18.4 million. At the end of the day, the fund balance in the general fund increased by just under $900,000, and there's a couple factors contributing to that increase in fund balance. One was basically a settlement that was received by the district in 2015, which related to recovery of some damages on windows, honestly, that were done in previous years. So that settlement added $210,000 to the, to the general fund. That $210,000 was not contemplated or included or planned in the original budget, so kind of a one-off transaction there. Then the other contributing factor to the increase in fund balances, special education revenue came in higher than last year, higher than was estimated, so that added about roughly $600,000 to the fund balance there. So those two factors really contribute to most of the increase in the fund balance. So the next series of slides that I'll kind of take you through focus on fund balance itself, so what's kind of the residual or carryover that you have going into the 15-16 school year as a result of the 2015 results. And the unassigned fund balance is, in the general fund, represents really discretionary dollars. So you have, as the board, you have discretionary control over spending on these. There's no strings attached, as there are in other areas of the fund balance, which I'll talk about in a few minutes here. So unassigned fund balance is kind of an indication of financial health of the district, and at the end of 2015, that is right at $2.8 million. And as you recall, as a board, you set a policy for the district of having a minimum of one-month reserve in unassigned fund balance, and by that, I mean one month's worth of expenses. And where the, at the end of 2015, the $2.8 million comes out at 1.9 months or 56 days, so you're well above your minimum policy requirement, and just under your goal of two months of reserve. So very close now to your goal going into the 15-16 school year. The non-spendable portion of fund balance basically represents kind of inventory, office supplies, prepaid expenses, things like that. That decreased just a little bit to $34,000 at the end of 2015, and most of that has to do with basically the timing of when you purchased paper, paper supplies for the 15-16 school year. That purchase actually occurred in July of 2015, which is after the end of the fiscal year that we audited, so hence, you have less prepaid and less non-spendable fund balance. So that is normal. Committed fund balance is an area, there's, that the board decides. And there's basically two, two items in here. One was a set aside for masonry work, and that, that set aside was about $409,000 in previous years, and it came over from the WR Grace Trust Fund that was closed out a few years back. That masonry project and the work has been completed, so there remains $107,000 of masonry set aside that can be used or redirected in some other manner for some other use, but it will take a board decision to do that. So you have that at your discretion to, to redirect that $107,000, and then there's also $400,000 set aside for severance and retirement separation payments. So that makes up your $507,000 committed fund balance at the end of 2015. Assigned fund balance is kind of, again, funds that have been earmarked for certain uses, but can be redirected at the discretion of management rather than needing a board action. At the end of 2015, your assigned fund balance is right at just under $2.3 million. And the set asides, kind of the earmarks there for curriculum, purchases of curriculum, QComp, which is kind of, it's reward-based aid for teachers, for exceptional teaching results with the students, technology and discretionary staff development funds. So you've added about $700,000 to kind of those set asides or earmarks in 2015. So much of that relates to a three-to-five-year plan, depending on what, what you're looking at as far as what the purposes of the earmarks are. So it's not just setting aside money for no, otherwise no intensive purpose. There is a plan for when that, those funds will be used. So now I'll talk about restricted fund balance. So I've kind of been talking about areas where you have more discretion and can redirect the use of resources. The next few slides that I'll go through are restricted fund balances, and those are restricted by, basically by state statutes, and restricted for very specific uses, depending on the source of the funding. The restricted fund balance excluding capital related is for staff development, and in 2015, those staff development dollars were used for those purposes. So that fund balance, the restricted portion of this is at zero at the end of 2015. Again, you do have some set aside earmarked in the assigned fund balance that I just talked about for staff development as well. The operating capital portion of the fund balance is sitting stable at $365,000. This element of fund balance is for purchases of, for example, information technology, leases of vehicles, leases of copiers, purchases of textbooks, desks for the classroom, things of that nature. The health and safety fund balance has also restricted, very restricted purposes for what those monies are for. This portion of fund balance tends to fluctuate up and down quite a bit over the years. So generally, it's, you spend, spend, spend money on a health and safety project, and then it can be up to two years trailing after that. The state has the authority to adjust your funding for those projects. So this one is a little bit harder for you to control at the district level. I can tell you, in 2014, you had tax levy dollars going in there of about $257,000 in 2015, about $250,000 in 2016, that, those levy dollars decreased to $98,000. And much of that is not a result of your choice. The other thing that's changing here is that going forward, the health and safety, this portion of fund balance is going to be combined with deferred maintenance, the next slide, and kind of re-characterizes long-term, for long-term facilities. So I'm not exactly sure how that's going to play out down the road, but it's going to be different than, than it has been as we know it. The next portion, then, is the deferred maintenance fund balance, and the deferred maintenance is in a deficit position of $113,000, and that is solely because of the timing of the parking lot resurfacing project. That, the parking lot resurfacing was budgeted to occur in July of 2015. The project actually occurred and was finished in June of 2015, so it's just a timing difference of when the work was done versus when the work was budgeted to be done. So I would expect that's going to come back to, at least come back to zero into, in 2016 fiscal year. The next slide that I have is food service fund balance, and the food service, at the end of the year, the food service fund was sitting at $197,000 for, for food service, and this portion of fund balance here can only be used for food service, so purchases of kitchen equipment, food service staff, it cannot be transferred out, for example, to the general... to the general fund, can't be used for anything other than food service. The food service fund is self-supporting, so the revenues are covering the costs there. And usually, purchases in the food service fund as far as capital-related are generally infrequent but significant in terms of dollars when they do occur. So, one fiscal year of purchases of equipment can, can decrease the fund balance fairly substantially in a short period of time. The community service fund balance, again, this is another area of restricted, restricted dollars and basically can only be used for community service projects. Revenues here do cover costs, so what's in here, for example, is early childhood, things like that. So, not normal classroom-type activities. The capital projects fund balance is down to zero now, according to plan. So, the, the projects, building projects that the fund was set up for have been completed, and the funds have been used for their intended purposes. So, this fund is actually, will actually close out now at the end of two thousand fifteen, absent some new project in the future. The debt service fund balance is sitting at seven hundred thousand dollars at the end of two thousand fifteen, and during the fiscal year, you issued some new bonds, issued new bonds to pay off old bonds. And that payoff, the issuance and payoff occurred within two thousand fifteen, and the increase in the fund balance here is happily, your new bond sold at a premium. So, the investing public was interested in your bond offering, and you were able to, to take in some additional, additional dollars above and beyond what you had planned. So, that's always nice to see. This pie chart is of the general fund revenues, kind of the, the sources of general fund revenues, where are they coming from? About eighty percent of the general fund revenues come from the state of Minnesota. So, kind of a, your most significant revenue is kind of beyond your control to a certain extent here. So, heavily dependent on the state and, and our lawmakers for funding, funding education. We're going to kind of transition now to looking at expenses on a per-student basis. So, the slide I have up here now kind of shows your pupil counts calculated the way that the state uses to provide funding to you. So, ADMs referred to average daily membership, basically average classroom, the average classroom population on an annual basis. So, sitting at, right at one thousand seven hundred thirty-one ADMs or, in a generic term, pupils. And what we then use those ADM numbers to do is kind of break down the district's expenses on a per-student basis then. So, we're lifting basically expense numbers right off of the financial statements and dividing by the ADM number, that one thousand seven hundred thirty-one students that I just showed you. So, the first slide I have is district and school administration and support. So, basically, the, the business office operations of the district, principals, superintendents, expenses of that nature. Administration is at, sitting right at six hundred and ninety-two dollars per student. And if you're able to see, the, the blue bars kind of left to right, the first five blue bars are basically the per-student costs of the Fairmont School District. The purple shaded bar is districts of similar size, so meaning districts with populations of one thousand to one thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine students. And the red bar on the far right is the statewide average. So, what it kind of does is just gives you a little bit of a, a flavor of how do we compare to other districts, how do we compare to the state as a whole for education spending? And in this case, you're below the, you're below the district averages and below the state averages on administration by about two hundred dollars per student or so. The next slide I have is regular instruction, and this is where most of the district's dollars go. This is where the, kind of the biggest line item in your budget is regular instruction, regular classroom instruction. That total is eight point six million dollars for two thousand fifteen, and on a per-student basis is four thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars. So, you're above putting more into the classroom here compared to your like-sized districts, kind of right in between there and, and the statewide average. Vocational instruction, you're quite a bit above the, above the comparable averages. This is at two hundred and thirty-seven dollars per pupil unit. And this particular slide, this area of vocational instruction is, is dependent, directly related to the number of programs that you have offerings for your students. And you have a pretty robust offering of vocational programs compared to other districts. So, when I talk about vocational programs, these are things like family and consumer science, welding, construction trades, agriculture. So, you have more programs of that nature than, than other districts. So, henceforth, you do compare higher on a cost per student in this area. And the last slide that I'm going to talk about tonight is special education instruction. This is the second largest line item in the district's budget, and this is right at two point four million dollars in total, and is at one thousand four hundred and seven dollars per student, per pupil unit. So, that one thousand four hundred and seven dollars is calculated on basically using all the student count in the entire district, not just students in the program. And you saw an increase here of about a hundred and seven dollars, and during two thousand fifteen, the district had to hire four to five additional staff of your own to run the program, and that's kind of as a result of retirements and things like that that happened in, at Southern Plains. So, kind of a shifting of costs here a little bit to full-time salary and benefits versus contract labor. So, that's what I have for you tonight.
Thank you. So, any questions for Mr. Polenhagen? I thought it was very thorough, so I appreciate that, and, but, anybody have a question about the report?
I don't have a question, but just a comment. Most of the board visited with you yesterday and your colleague. We got a briefing on this yesterday, and it looked really good. I want to talk a little bit about the assigned balances that we set aside, because I just did some totals here. But we wanted to make sure that in the next three years, we have money set aside for curriculum, for technology, for staff development, and for literacy. And, thanks, Dan. And for the next three years, we've set aside thirty thousand dollars for literacy, and that money really goes into our two media centers, one at the elementary, one at the high school, to help fund materials. And we set aside a half a million dollars to be spent over the next two years for technology, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars each year. And we set aside three hundred thousand dollars for this year, three hundred thousand dollars next year, and two hundred thousand dollars for the next two years for curriculum. One of the big expenses we have this year, we're investing two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on our new elementary reading curriculum. And then we set aside a hundred thousand dollars each year for staff development. And so, all of those programs, you know, directly impact our faculty by giving them the right materials, the right curriculum, the technology, and the staff development that they need, which that indirectly impacts positively our student body. So, I feel like we're in pretty good shape.
Yeah, we're in very good shape right now, yeah. All right, any other questions? Thanks for being here tonight. We think Lindsey was here several times and did most of the legwork on the audit, and so we appreciate that too, and so thank you for your work on that, and thanks for being here tonight too. All right, so with the conclusion of that, then we need to approve or not approve the audit report, so I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen audit report.
Thank you, Julie, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Rufus. I have a motion by Julie, second by Rufus, to approve two thousand fifteen sixteen audit report as presented. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone, for that. All right, next on our agenda is donation, Dan.
We have a resolution for a donation here, we find in appendix B. I would introduce the following resolution and move for its adoption. Whereas, an anonymous donation valued at four hundred and fifty dollars were made in support of the high school greenhouse, be it resolved by the Fairmont Area School Board to gratefully accept this gift.
Thank you, Dan, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Nicole. So, I have Dan introducing the resolution, and Nicole with the second, and it was from some anonymous donor, and we thank them, they know who they are, so we appreciate that for the high school greenhouse. So, we have to voice vote, Danielle?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Chair votes, aye.
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Rufus?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is our financial reports and bills, and Sue Nelson, our business manager, is here to discuss those.
Okay, tonight on the agenda, we have the wires and transfers from October ninth to October twenty-second, and the payment of the October twenty-seventh bills. If you look at the wires and transfers, we just have a few there. The middle one was our pathways money for our early learning scholarship program, and the second one was our revenue share when we pay some of our expenditures through Commerce Bank.
Any questions on those?
Okay, then you have your check register data today, October twenty-seventh. I just have a couple to bring to your attention. Check number fifty-seven, six seventy-six, made out to Dean's Construction. This is for foundation and floor construction for the FFA Greenhouse that Superintendent Brown mentioned is being worked on right now on the east side of the building. And check number fifty-seven, six eighty-three, made out to Gemini Studios. This is for twenty wireless microphones, they'll be used for the play and used in auditorium. And then check number fifty-seven, six ninety-nine, made out to Nicole Vagel. Nicole came to our school on October nineteenth, and she did staff development training with all of our staff and assessments, and that was paid for with SDCC dollars. That is all I have for you tonight, Julie, and I did review everything prior to the board meeting. Do you have any questions on the register?
Doesn't seem like it's as big as it usually is.
No, it doesn't.
And the transfers too are way lower than...
Next, next board meeting, there'll be that bigger list of transfers.
Yep, and the payroll and stuff will be on that one too, so, all right.
Okay, if there's no other questions or anything on the financial reports, I'd like to make a motion to approve the wire transfers for October ninth, two thousand fifteen, to October twenty-second, two thousand fifteen, and payment of the October twenty-seventh, two thousand fifteen bills.
Thank you, Julie, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Rufus. I have a motion by Julie, second by Rufus, to approve the financial report for October twenty-seventh as presented. Any further discussion or questions for Sue or Julie on any of the reports? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries, thank you, Sue. Then we'll go to old business, and in your pack you should have appendix C, which is the policy we talked about at our last meeting, which is number five thirty-nine, which is the tuition agreement for secondary students. I have not heard any additional comments from that, so I would offer the motion to approve policy five thirty-nine, the tuition agreement for secondary students as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Nicole. So, a motion by Diana, second by Nicole, to approve policy five thirty-nine. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries, thank you. Then we'll move to new business, and we have the SRO, or the Student Resource Officer, Nicole, can you talk about that?
Yes, if you recall, at our work session that we had about six months ago, we had a presentation from Chief Brosma regarding an SRO. And since then, Superintendent Brown, Chief Brosma, and the Staff Welfare Committee have met regarding this proposal to bring an SRO back into our schools. Staff Welfare has approved moving forward with hiring a part-time SRO beginning November second, two thousand fifteen, at a cost of twenty thousand dollars. This officer will work in our buildings ten hours per week. With that, I move to approve the hiring of a part-time SRO for the remainder of the two thousand fifteen sixteen school year to work ten hours per week at a cost of twenty thousand dollars beginning November second, two thousand fifteen.
Thank you, Nicole, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Rufus. A motion by Nicole, second by Rufus, to approve the hiring of a part-time SRO for the fifteen sixteen school year. Is there any discussion or questions, comments, concerns?
So, as I understand, we're basically just purchasing a time from the Fairmont Police Department for, for this person?
We are, and then it will be approximately ten hours per week, if we do need to call the police for any other reason that we would need police on a regular basis. So, that would be over and above the ten hours, and this person will be split between the elementary and the secondary school, going back and forth wherever they're, wherever he or she thinks are needed.
They'll be doing some classroom training, and with the social media items that we have, they'll be doing some training on that, and there'll be some other things that will be part of what they will do. It's not just to come and arrest kids at school, that's not what an SRO does, they're, they're an educator too. So, we hope that we, people will appreciate that, and we'll gain a lot of insight from them at what happens in our community during the weekends when kids aren't in our building, and that if we have to help them during the week, then we know who they are and we know how to do that. So, we just appreciate that.
And I just want to point out too, that this was a proposal that we've been kicking around for a number of months. It had nothing directly to do with the event that happened two weeks ago. This was something that we had discussed before then. Officially though, the Staff Welfare Committee took, approved this proposal, I think, on the twentieth of October, but this was something that we'd been thinking about and working with the chief, and we appreciate the work that Chief Brosma has provided us.
Yeah, well, there was a lot of discussion about the funding for sources and amount of time and all different kinds of things. So, this was finally the agreement we could agree on, so.
So, so basically, we're, we're footing the bill entirely for this at this point?
For the part-time.
For the part-time, just for, yeah.
Who, do we know who our SRO is going to be?
We do not, and two days from today, I think at five-thirty, the city council is having a special meeting to talk about the report that they contracted for about a year ago. That's going to be released publicly on Thursday of this week, and I'm not privy to that report of whether they're going to propose to keep the same number of officers or not, but, or whether they suggest they add somebody. But at this point, the chief has not designated anybody yet, but we hope he does before next Monday.
Yeah, I see this as a first step of re-establishing, you know, the, the resource officer in the school. You know, there's a lot of parts in play, including, you know, the, the city's assessment of their staffing needs, and I expect that, you know, the model that we're, that we're going to be using going forward for staffing, whether it's ten hours or more, will be, you know, discussed further as we get more information. But it's a great start. I think it's, it's a, it's a, it's a great step forward for the school and the community.
All right, any additional questions or comments? All right, well, I have a motion on the floor, so we'll vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries, thank you. Okay, next on our agenda is the soccer and hockey funding proposal, Dan.
The Operations Committee met earlier today before this meeting, and we approved this proposal, which I'll give you the details of as far as the school district's funding of the hockey and soccer programs. First, Fairmont Area School District will provide ten thousand dollars in funding to both hockey and soccer for this present two thousand fifteen sixteen school year. Next, the Fairmont Area School District will provide fifteen thousand dollars in funding to both hockey and soccer for next year, twenty sixteen seventeen. And then in twenty seventeen eighteen, the district will provide twenty thousand dollars in funding to both hockey and soccer. During the next three years, twenty fifteen sixteen, sixteen... During the next three years, twenty fifteen, sixteen, sixteen, seventeen, and seventeen, eighteen, the hockey and soccer associations will keep all registration fees, gate receipts, and concessions revenue as they do presently. Starting with the twenty eighteen, nineteen school year, hockey and soccer will be treated the same as Fairmont High School-sponsored varsity sports, with, with this to be known as well. Fairmont Area Schools will not be financially responsible for the cost, maintenance, or operation of hockey and soccer facilities and equipment, which is due to the fact that we have a bit of a unique situation in that the soccer fields are owned by the city. The, the hockey arena is, is owned by the county and the Fair Board. So all of our other sports presently play at sites that are owned by the school. The tennis courts, the baseball, the gym, the football field is all, is all owned and operated by us. So that is the agreement which the Operations Committee approved here earlier this afternoon. And I would make a motion to approve that proposal as presented.
Thank you, Dan. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Nicole. A motion by Dana, second by Nicole, to approve the proposal for the, for funding of the Fairmont High School Boys and Girls Soccer and Hockey Programs as presented in Appendix D. Is there any further discussion or questions?
This, too, was brought to the board's attention at the work session that we had last spring. And though it's taken a while to come to an agreement, I appreciate all of the, those who have been involved in discussions and who have continued to look at this. And I think it's a good thing for our schools. We have a lot of students, especially in soccer. I think it's our most populated sport, for lack of a better word. And hockey has been around in Fairmont for quite some time as well. So I, I appreciate all those who have worked to bring this about.
I think they've both, they've both been part of our, of our school for, for more than a decade now, and we're basically heading toward the next generation of people who have been involved in this sport at, at Fairmont High School, and they've proven their, the worthiness of the programs. The participation numbers are excellent, and it's something that's the, part of the fabric of our community. And I'm glad we'll be able to support it fully.
And I just want to publicly thank the soccer and the hockey associations for their continuous advocacy for our student athletes. This is a great move. It's a, it's a phased-in approach. We actually took this model from New Ulm. New Ulm had a very similar approach on how they put different sports into their arena with everybody else. And I think it's a, it's a phased-in approach, but it's a good approach, and it's one that's going to treat these two wonderful associations like all other of our student athletes. And we appreciate the good work that the associations have done in the past, and we're looking forward to working with them very closely in the future. After we approve this, the next step is that we will update the agreements with the soccer and the hockey associations, and we'll embed, embed this language in those proposals. And so that'll be our next step, but this is a great step.
Any other discussion or questions? We have a motion on the floor, so all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you. Then we'll move to personnel. We have a couple of medical leaves. Nicole?
Yes, Angela Lawrence, Vax teacher, has requested a medical leave effective January fourth, two thousand sixteen, and extending through January twenty-ninth, two thousand sixteen. With that, I move to approve the medical leave of Angela Lawrence effective honor about January fourth, two thousand sixteen, extending through January twenty-eighth, two thousand sixteen, or per medical recommendation.
Thank you, Nicole. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Rufus. I have a motion by Nicole, second by Rufus, to approve the medical leave for Angela Lawrence. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Then the second one?
Is for Megan Finkbeiner. Intervention aide has requested a medical leave effective honor about March first, two thousand sixteen, extending through April fourteenth, two thousand sixteen. With that, I move to approve said medical leave through April fourteenth, two thousand sixteen, or per medical recommendation.
Thank you, Nicole. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Rufus. I have a motion by Nicole, second by Rufus, to approve the medical leave for Megan Finkbeiner as presented. Any further discussion on that item? Now, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Then retirement, Rufus. We have one to talk about.
Uh, where are we? Okay. I'd like to offer a motion to approve the retirement of Darcia Schmidt effective October fourteenth, two thousand fifteen.
All right, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second him.
Thank you. So I have a motion by Rufus, second by Julie, to approve the retirement of Darcia Schmidt effective on October fifteenth, two thousand fifteen. This was kind of one of those that she was going to retire earlier, and then we had a teacher who was on medical leave, and so she took her place until now. And so we're just acting on her retirement, which was on October fourteenth. I saw her on that day, and she was-
Smiling?
Smiling and looking forward to new adventures with grandchildren and some travel. And she's been in the district since nineteen eighty-one. Well, she came in nineteen eighty-five to Fairmont, but she had taught in Seelon since nineteen eighty-one. So we just appreciate her service in all those years, and we're sure the best as she moves forward in her retirement, so. So I have a motion on the floor. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. All right, we're down to board and committee reports, and we have Staff Welfare Committee meeting, Nicole?
Yes, Staff Welfare met on October twentieth, I believe, and we- is that right? And we discussed the SRO officer and the medical leave requests that were presented this evening.
Yep.
We've already acted on it.
Yep. Okay, then the board, high school staff meeting, Julie?
Yeah, we met with the staff early on last Thursday morning, I believe it was, the twenty-second. And really, the main thing was listening to the staff and hearing some of their concerns, some of their comments related to the threat that the district received two weeks ago, and, you know, listening to what they had to say. They had some great suggestions how things should be, ways we can improve, and, you know, and like anything else is, you know, you never know what you can improve until something comes up of it in that, and we can see that. We also had some discussion on some technology needs and that. I really can't think of anything.
Pass, pass?
Pass, pass. That's what it was, yes. In which the students can earn by being current in all their classes, and they can earn a time, which have a two-hour late start, and in which the, gives the other students who need that extra help that opportunity to come in and receive that extra help and report on how the- I was, I was really amazed as how they could, how they were working in that, in that they were making arrangements with students to come in. Some students were coming in on their own. Students, especially the day after the, you know, if they left from the threat that day, they came in the next morning, got help right away, and had to stay current. And so it was good to hear that there's a practice, and it's working well.
There are also some students who have started a club, and there may be more coming, and-
Some time for them to meet.
Another aspect I've heard from a few teachers, that they welcome the time during the day to provide some extra help to the students. You know, typically, it would be, that extra help would occur either before school or after school. So this provides an opportunity embedded in the day, you know, to provide that, you know, that extra help.
And quite, some of the discussion was, some of the students feel it's like a punitive thing, like it's a punishment that they have to come, but the teachers don't view it that way at all. They just view it as a way to help students move along if they've missed some essential curriculum or learning targets. That, that's a way that they can help them get caught up, and so it's just a, it's a good thing for them to do. One other thing we discussed was when parents call school board members and how the teachers, they were just questioning that. But we're always trying to recommend that, which is our policy, that if a parent has a concern with us, about their student with a teacher, that they should call the teacher first, and then, then move down through the chain of command, then to the principals, and then if there's no Superintendent Brown, and then to the school board. So we discussed that, that chain of command, too, that was the-
I think there was some, yeah, there, people were feeling that that wasn't being followed. But, you know, that is really what our policy is, and that's what we should be following.
And I, I would just like to voice that, you know, I would encourage parents if they've, if they've gone through the chain of command and, and they've, and they still feel that their concerns, you know, they'd like to discuss their concerns further. You know, I would certainly, as a board member, you know, welcome, you know, to have that discussion, welcome the opportunity to have that discussion. So, you know, I think all of the board members, you know, are, you know, willing and able to hear, you know, concerns from parents, students, teachers, any members of the community.
Yep. Anything else from that high school staff meeting? Then also on, so we'll move to the board and high school student luncheon. Also, on Thursday, we invited the student council to come and talk to us, and our discussion for the whole, it was over an hour, wasn't it? Was on the response in, to that October twelfth threat that we had at our district. And I think kind of one of the things that was amazing was we asked how many of the students knew about it before they came to school, and I bet seventy-five or eighty percent of them are, had already known about it before they got to school. That was kind of an eye-opener, but social media is quite the animal. We talked about the timing, timing of the events, and they felt a lack of information, that teachers couldn't talk to them about it. And so we took their, along with the, we met with the parents, and we met with teachers, and we met with students. So we do have a good idea how people reacted to the day and some things that we can implement to make that whole situation a better day for everyone. And hopefully, we will never have to experience it again, but should it come about, we do have some plans that will be enacted in the next couple of weeks, I think.
Right, and Detective Tonder joined us for the student council luncheon and for the staff meeting and the community meeting. Chief Brosma and Officer Baletta?
Baletti.
Baletti. They joined us, and we really appreciate the work of the Fairmont Police Department for helping us out that day.
We appreciate everybody who came and shared their concerns, and really, the, all the discussions were very good, and they had a lot of good constructive ways or things, feedback, that can make the communications and just the knowledge, where we find the knowledge or where we find the facts. We, we learned a lot about that, so we appreciate all of the people who came and shared. Yeah, very good. All right, the-
I just want to add with that is, is that, you know, you got to come forth, because if you have an idea or something like that, and nobody else has thought of it, you know, how else can we realize it and make it better? Is, you know, come forth and, and make it known, so.
All right, then operations, staff welfare audit meetings, Dan?
Well, yesterday, we just had a couple of in-and-out meetings with our auditors that were here tonight and gave us the presentation that we showed. And today's meeting for operations was mainly in to the hockey and soccer funding proposal that we approved. And one other item is that we approved the use of the Performing Arts Center for an event on Wednesday, January thirteenth, which is a fundraiser talent show for kids against hunger. That event had previously been held at the Opera House, but they felt that they'd had such success with it there that it's actually outgrown that, so they needed a bigger facility. So they, we approved the request to use the Performing Arts Center at the high school for that next January.
That was it?
That was it.
All right, thank you, Dan. Any other questions for, about any of the board committee reports? All right, if nothing else needs to come, I would entertain the motion to adjourn.
Still moved?
Thank you, Dan. Is there a second?
I'll second him.
Thank you, Julie. I have a motion by Dan, second by Julie, to approve adjourned the school board meeting at six oh two PM. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, board.